Welcome, everybody. This is the City Council Select Committee to Study Barriers to Serving on City Boards and Commission. Today's March 21st, 2023, and this meeting starts at 7:30. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Laura, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Javier.
Here.
Jamila.
Yeah.
Garrick.
Here.
Cynthia.
Here.
And Gwen is not present yet. Hopefully, we'll join soon.
And we have quorum.
Yes.
Excellent. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the same thing that I do every week. We always allocate at the beginning of each meeting fifteen minutes to for people to come to do public comment. We have a couple of people during the tenure of this committee. One of those committee members was Megan Pike, the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, and that sort of led to to coming here and sort of working with us in an incredibly good sort of more than one-page informative that we're gonna be using as a recommend, as a part of the recommendations to streamline and how people get to know and what they are getting into. So, as I said, this is public comment. I don't see anybody yet. We, we, today is an exception that this meeting is happening in March 21st. Regular meeting times are the second and the fourth week of each month. People can go to the Agenda Center for, of the city of Northampton to, to see our agendas previous and the ones that are coming. If anybody want to come, it's more than welcome. If anybody's watching this as a recording, it's also welcome to come. I'm gonna close public comment, and we're gonna move to the next agenda item. Excellent. I deny them a three approval of minutes for previous meeting. Everybody was able to check the minutes from February 14, 2023, and February 28, 2023. Everybody was able to set up to just see. Anybody has an amendment for those minutes? Excellent. I don't see any, any amendment. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from February 14 and February 20, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Excellent. Looking for a second. Jamila, second. Jamila, can you repeat it just for the record?
Oh, I'll second.
Excellent. So, the minutes had been approved, and I just want to let you know that Jean is helping us to get up to date with our minutes, with the minutes being posted and, you know, when I talked to City Council President Nash today about it, and he has been working on it. I appreciate the support that he's given us.
Do we have to vote to approve? Do we have to vote to approve?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Like a roll call?
Roll call, Laura, for the approval of the minutes of February 14 and February 20, 2023.
Javier.
Yes.
Jamila.
Yes.
Cynthia.
Yes.
And Garrick.
Yes.
Minutes approved. Thanks, Jamila.
I just, I think all of the minutes are posted except that there's three meetings in November that Beth Kaplowit hadn't finished transcribing, the first, the eighth, and the 29th. And there are some that look as if they're not posted, but those were actually meetings that were canceled due to technical difficulty. So, I, I need to go and just indicate that those meetings did not take place. So, otherwise, I believe we're up to date except for those three November meetings.
Perfect. Excellent. So, we're gonna go to the next agenda item, which is that has the different subdivision, general discussion items. I'm gonna give a survey update, and I'm gonna move number A for later, which is discussion with Mayor Generalist Shara. She's coming, but she's running late because these trustee meeting from this mid-bulk. So, we're gonna move that later in January 4th, if that's okay with everybody. Excellent. I see everybody's noting. Survey update. So, we are, we have 148. So, I'm confident that by the end of this week, we're gonna have 150, which is massive. I, I was gonna, I was gonna print, and I was gonna get a PDF version of the survey with all the data that we have so far, but I'm gonna wait to get 150, probably by the end of this week. And I will send each member, so that it's literally the same, the same report that you already guys got a couple of weeks ago, about half ago, two months ago, with all the data, all the percentages, all the charts. It's, and includes also all the narrative answers for each question. Probably what we're gonna do, we're gonna close after, after the, the, the public speaking event, this, the 26th. We're gonna close the, the survey time. And we're gonna work with the numbers that we have, right? If we, if there is anything else, we can add an amended, amended section that says that after this day, we'd receive X, Y, and Z number of, of survey, but the numbers are represented all the way to the end of March. Is any question in relationship to that? I was in, and I, and I realized that I never asked, was it useful and readable and accessible the way how Qualtrics produced that PDF report? So, I'm gonna put it on there if, if members want to comment. Yeah.
So, you're, you're asking if Qualtrics version was accessible or what you did, your summary?
No, if the report was accessible, because I realized that we never talk about, oh, this looks like a good automatic report. It's readable. I'm understanding everything. I don't need anything else. I never asked that question when we start talking, and I realized that. So, I wanna ask now that I'm gonna produce sort of the final automatic report.
And that's the one you kind of massaged, though, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, just to make sure I knew what you were asking. So, I was, I was good with it, but anyone else?
Yeah, I was able to navigate it pretty fairly easy.
You know, the one that was a PDF, right?
Yes, yes. Not the first one. That was a bad spreadsheet.
Okay. Yeah, the PDF one was, was readable.
Okay. Laura, you also saw it, right?
Yes. Yeah. No, I thought it was great.
Okay. So, I'm gonna, because the system gives you different ways to output a report. My first attend, as you know, was a pretty ugly, bad spreadsheet in that. But after that, I found out a way that it's actual sort of looks like, like a, like a valid report. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the same, and everybody's gonna get a copy, and we're closing. We're closing the survey this Sunday, if that's okay with everybody here. Excellent. We're gonna move ahead. And everybody was able to take a look to the versions that I sent from the flyer. I mean, before that. Laura already made sure that more than 400 people got an email that we drafted with the invitation for, for March 26. And we were just talking with Laura in the same, in same fashion that when she sent the email, the first email for this outreach of the survey, she's already gotten a couple of people saying that are gonna be attending to the event, which is sort of, it's a mirror situation, which it's pretty sort of hopeful. And Laura, one of the things that I told Jean today was how, how much to appreciate your work.
Very welcome.
So, I'm gonna show you. I'm gonna turn my screen. Hold on. First, I'm gonna select, oh, when it's coming. I'm gonna share my screen with the different versions of the... Hey, Wen.
Hello. How are you?
Good. Let me give you, I'm gonna give you sort of another, like a one-minute overview where we are so far. So, the mayor is coming today, but we're moving sort of through the agenda, putting, like, moving her down the agenda so we can talk about that, about other things while she's coming.
Okay.
The last day of the survey is gonna be this coming Sunday. So, we close. Any, any, any other entry from the survey is gonna be added to the end of the, of the report as an amended portion.
That's great. Okay.
And by Sunday, because we're gonna close the survey, I'm gonna send the final report. Remember the, the, the report that has the, the charts, the percentages? And I asked each member how they feel about that format, that automatic report. Was it, was, was it useful for you and easy to read?
Yeah, I, I definitely appreciated the bars and the different colors, the varying colors were helpful as well. I think that's what you mean, right?
Yeah, because if you remember, the first one that I sent was a spreadsheet that was pretty bad.
You know, I mean, it, I think it's very good. I mean, you know, the use of color is really helpful. It definitely shows up on the screen. It's, you know, kind of self-explanatory with the, the key. And, and I'm happy to hear that maybe one last shootout for anyone who thinks that someone didn't get to it yet would be nice to have just a couple more days before the deadline, which would be Sunday.
Yes. So, since since, so Laura sent a reminder around two weeks ago, and we increased participation by 25% since that reminder.
Yeah.
It's extraordinary good, right? We're close to 150 right now.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
So, and, and Laura made sure that the, the, we sent an email with the Zoom link. So, we drafted an email, and we sent it with a Zoom link as invitation to more than 400 people that also got the survey, but more than 400 people to attend. And one of the things that I was saying is that I was talking with Laura, and in the same fashion that when she sent the survey, she got a middle responses, a positive response from people. She got a couple of positive responses in relation to people attending the event, which is, you know, we're in a good place. So, now, with all that being said, I'm gonna share the flyer that is gonna be sent by all the councilors, and it's gonna be sent by, by, by the city, and we're gonna be chair wildly. And we're gonna decide, it's, it's, it's three different, three of the same flyers with little tiny bit of edits. So, so we're gonna start here. Let me fill this here. I, I'm trying to open this. Ah, no, I can see everybody. So, this is the first, everybody can see this.
Yep.
So, this is the first one. So, the committee to supervise the survey and city boards and commissions, Zoom link, and session March 26, 12:00 PM. We're close to completing our report, and we would like to hear from you about your experience and how we can make the process related to serving in boards and committees better. And then the bottom is the Zoom link, like big display. The second one is similar, but let's worry. We're close to completing our report, and we would like to hear from you about your experience. How can we, you know, how can we make the process related to reimbursing committees better?
Okay.
And this is the last one, which is pretty much the same. So, so, I'm, so we use Canva to do this, so like 90%, 95% of what is there, it's already sort of done by the system. So, I'm inclined to do this one, which looks a little less chunky and bulky than the other, the other. And the good thing is that I'm gonna send it to you, and people are gonna be able to double-tab the PDF version of it, and the tabbing the PDF is gonna immediately open the Zoom link.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
And the other option for those that may, may not be able to do that, they can just copy-paste it on the, on the toolbar of the browser and just use it.
Okay.
Any, any, any comments, any additions, instructions?
Yes. So, I'm assuming this is just, this is a digital-only kind of thing. We're not?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to print a bunch tomorrow, and I'm gonna sort of give it, I'm gonna give it to the coffee shops around in downtown, in different places. And if you guys want to just to print it out and, and, and put it around, that's also fine. I mean, I'm gonna make sure that all the bulletin boards in downtown and around downtown get this one sort of clustered with.
Okay. If that's the case, could I make a suggestion to possibly put a little QR code somewhere?
Funny, I do, we're saying that I thought, oh, that's, yeah, yes, yeah. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a QR code.
Yeah, that, that way people, you could take a picture of it on your phone and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a really great idea.
Excellent.
It looks like the third one has the most amount of information on it.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I like the colors and everything. It looks good. It's noticeable. And as long as I can print it out, I can spread it around.
Excellent. So, what I'm gonna do, which is the main, main comment is, I'm gonna add a QR code so people can can, any other, Cynthia?
Um, I always, I always hate it when people do this wordsmithing, but I just want to, now that you, if this, if this were distributed to city councilors, which I think you said, Javier?
So, the baseline is that every elected official is gonna send it to their mail, to their sort of.
Okay. Yeah, which, which makes total sense. But now that we've talked about putting in coffee shops and think about people who have no clue what this is, right? So, they're gonna see, we, we, we wanna hear from you about your experiences. Like, what kind of experiences? You know, I just think that audience, I mean, I'm not, you know, gonna make a big deal out of it, but it just, they may need to know what this is, right? I mean, I don't know if Select Committee to Study Barriers really, really says it, right? To, to the average city resident. So, I just, I just question that, but I think we're in a, a time crunch here. So, I don't wanna wordsmith it too much, but Garrick, you do this for a living, um, kind of, sort of.
Oh, yeah, scraping by. I had some questions, thoughts about that as well, but I also felt that we're, we're low on time. My, my biggest thing was that it says, we wanna hear about your experience, but I, my thought is that we wanna hear about people who might not have even tried to apply, because they don't know. You know, like, we wanna bring a, a wide net of folks.
Education. Yeah.
I can, I can, I can add it thought and experience.
Yeah, something.
Okay. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let me, so I'm gonna add, I'm gonna, so I'm adding the QR code. And I'm adding thoughts and experience.
I will also send you some notes. I think that there can be some formatting, some colors, like moving, moving the date up a little bit to separate it from itself. There's, there's a couple minor tweaks I think we could do.
Excellent. Just be really.
I'll be gentle. I'll be gentle.
Be, be brutal if you want, but be really specific so we don't create communication, ongoing communication. That's what I mean.
Yes. Okay.
And what's nice about this version, Javier, before we start maybe going into others, I think this version was the only one that said Northampton, but I could be wrong, because I was, there was sliding by kind of quickly. So, I wanna make sure it's Northampton.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Cool. So, any, Andrew, Laura?
I just had one thought. You know, in addition to improving the processes for serving on city boards and committees, I was thinking, you know, the pertinent question would be, how can Northampton enable more people to participate? But, you know, I, I know it doesn't wanna get, you don't wanna get too long.
Improving Northampton can improve the processes.
How can North, Northampton enable more people to participate? I don't know. You're always kind of trying to increase the range of people in the community.
Yeah. Perfect.
But I, you know, if it seems to make it too long, that wouldn't be good either. So.
Can I ask a quick question? Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that, is that gonna be a hyperlink at the bottom? Because, oh, boy.
It is.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that, and there's gonna be QR code as well. There's, there's a, I was.
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be a hyperlink, so people can just go there. In the worst case scenario, they can just copy-paste it and add it to the, to the bar of the browser.
It actually works right now.
Excellent.
It'll take it to Zoom.
Excellent, because I, I send copies of this beforehand. Excellent. Excellent. So, I have Laura's comments, Cynthia's comment, and Garrett's comment. If anybody else wants to think about something else later, just let me know. Tomorrow at, let me, I'm gonna, the deadline for comments is gonna be tomorrow at, I'm seeing my Wednesday, um, 10:00 AM. Just because that's, that's my first meeting tomorrow. Excellent. So, that's all that. We're gonna move to, we need a survey update. We talk about the event, and now we're gonna move to welcome Mayor Gina Luis Shara.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm glad to be with you. Thank you for moving me a bit on the schedule. I, I appreciate it. I had some folks, trustees this evening. And it's in person, so I had to, like, raise back your.
You know, it's funny. I'm suffering from the same, but people, some people are still with Zoom, but others with face-to-face meetings, which, you know, sometimes I'm doing this on the, in my car while commuting to the other one that is person. It's crazy.
Yeah, it's really hard. We haven't figured out how to build back in that time to move ourselves through time and space anymore.
Javier, thank you so much for being here. You know, we have been having a lot of, a lot of discussions. We also talk how we are getting almost 150 answers to the survey that we put out, thanks to Laura, to people who have served in different capacities, in different commissions and boards, but also people who have applied, and they have not been appointed, to get a sense more or less about the, the processes and, and, and sort of what, how people feels the processes. I'm pretty sure members have a lot of questions, and I'm gonna sort of open with a, with a doozy one that I was thinking today. I met today with City Council President Nash, and all of a sudden, I have an epiphany about it. It's like, so we're heading right now into, in budget season. I mean, you're a rating budget season, obviously.
Yes.
And, and one of the things that this committee has been talking a lot is about sort of revamping in some way the website of the city. I sort of, and, and, and I think, and, you know, I'm pretty sure you hear this a lot, which is, you know, how do we get people in the less amount of clicks from the point A to the point B? And, and in the case of, of accessibility and access to the information about, you know, vacant vacancies in, in boards and commissions, what the commissions are about, and, and all that information that people, for people to be able to do sort of an educated guess. Okay, do I wanna do it? I may not wanna do it, you know? And, and that also is streamlining the process of somebody sending their application and getting an automated email back saying, thanks for your application. Just should we hear from, seen some amount of time? Now, going back, now that, that we're sort of in, 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 in sort of a, for anybody who's not the mayor, in the Christmas season of the city.
It feels that Christmas Eve, but okay.
How, how, what do you, what are your thoughts in relationship to, to, to that? To sort of streamlining a little?
Changing. So, I mean, it would be a dream of mine to completely revamp our website. But, so, are you asking about that in, in the context of the budget, because it will take resources to do something, or?
Because I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that it may need send a small allocation to be able to have sort of a a makeover.
So, that would actually be more of a capital expense. Well, it depends, actually, right? So, if it was an over $10,000 expense, it could be a capital expense. It wouldn't be something necessarily that we would build into the budget, because it would be a one-time expense. So, again, it would be a dream of mine to totally revamp the website. I actually feel like the boards and committees section is perhaps the best-placed section. Maybe, I don't know, but that says about the rest of the website. But, you know, when you go to the page, like, it's right smack dab in the middle is that button to go to boards and committees. Don't get me started on that we, that we, we break them, we break the alphabet in half. That makes me crazy, because I'm always like, hell, M, and trying to figure out, like, which of those to click on. I would like that to be easier. But in terms of actually, like, getting to current vacancies, it should be one click to get there, just from that button right in the center of the screen. But yes, there, there are all sorts of dreams I have for making changes to the site. You know, it was my first or second year as city councillor, we actually won Mass, Massachusetts Municipal Association Award for our city website. We were, it was like considered to be a great site. And I'm not sure that I felt that way then, and I'm sorry, Mayor Darkwitz was very proud, and so I, no disrespect. But I do feel like we could do a better job of it. That would probably be something that I would build. So, we are just, the council is just, in the, in their next meeting, going to vote on the capital plan. A complete revamp of the site might be something that I would build into a capital plan at some point. But smaller tweaks we could pretend, we could do, you know, hopefully fairly easily and in-house without a lot of expense.
And, and, and one of the, so one of the reasons I'm, I'm asking is, so we, we had given public comment, but also coming to a working session with us, Megan Pike, Chair of the Human Rights Commission, right? And one of the, among the many things that they are working, one of, the one of those was sort of a, a little more than one pager, explaining what they are, how they do it, right?
What Human Rights Commission does?
Yeah. And because, you know, the charge is one, but how, how it's run, the different roles, you know, telling people, well, you know, this is amount of hours that the actual work is, it's giving you. We do public events. We don't do public events. You're expected to read outside the meeting things, or, you know, the, the kind of things that people would wanna, would wanna know before sort of deciding. And one of the things that I, I realize is, one of the things, and I, and I mentioned it today to Council President Nash, was that for my life, I cannot find in boards and commission if, if which ones are subject to open meeting law and which ones are not. And and I navigate it, and I wasn't able to find it. And this is, it's killing me, because I'm always saying, you know, I put myself as an example of, I have privilege, because I can come in public meeting, being recorded, even say what I say, right? I sort of, I just talk, right? But not everybody has that, sort of that privilege, right? People may not necessarily want to give public comment. People may not necessarily wanna serve in a public capacity where their emails can be. uh, serve in a public capacity where their emails can be requested for public record, where, you know, the meetings are being recorded for posterity on the website, right? And I, I'm killing myself because today I have that epiphany. But also I realized that there is no way to learn in the website about those qualities of, of the meeting, right? So, um, one of the things that we're, we are, we work with Megan was is this set of template for all, every single commission and board where, you know, they, they are going to have to talk about that. So it's something that somebody can just go to the specific link of the specific commission and board, download it and it's gonna, you know, workload, what they are doing, how many hours they are meeting, uh, respective were outside or not from the meeting, right? And, and when we talk about sort of the website is adding, adding that kind of things in a really accessible way, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and also, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna confess that I'm not sure about it. I think there is also no consolidated information about the, 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 uh, or maybe it's the, the full, it's, uh, vacancy at, at the moment for every sing- so every single.
There is. Um, so if you go to that main page, we, we now, we list the current vacancies. And actually, one thing that, um, I started, since I've been mayor, started doing was, um, when someone's, you know, it's, it's, can be a multi-week process. Once I've appointed someone to go through that process with city services and city council and then being, um, confirmed by the council. So I've started putting, um, that people are pending, um, for a vacancy. So for example, Arts Council, just at the last council meeting, someone was on the agenda to be referred to city services. So now under Arts Council, um, his name is there, but it says, I think it says pending council, um, approval or something like that.
Yeah. That, one of the good things that I have seen during the tenure of this committee, I have seen sort of updates to that section of the website. Um, but one of the things that our recommendations are gonna have is that template that was created by Megan and sort of worked with us. Uh, in relation to people understanding, you know, the specificities and the quirks and, you know, the, the synchrocy of the specific uh, boards and commissions that people may be interested.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because, you know, I'm serving right now in the compensation, elected officials' compensation advisory and um, there, there is no sense about, you know, Robert's rules. There's no sense about what will be a violation of admitting. So learning how to navigate those things and knowing what people are sort of getting into it. Um, I think it's, it's one of the things that we're talking about and that's a sub for shadowing. It's, it's a section of a report.
So when you all started, did, did Alan Seawald come and go over? I thought Alan came and gave a presentation, right?
Yeah, yeah. But, um, but you know, when somebody, when, when somebody says, oh, how we can move the work forward, well, let's just have two people meeting uh, advising the work. And if those two people are not the chair, somebody chair, that, that's going to be a violation because, you know, if you have four members. So, and, and people, you know, all, they, they are a lot of specific situations that come out that are, you know, you cannot address in a on a talk on a training because it's really a specific sort of unique, right?
Well, and that one is particularly unique, right? Because it's, it's a city council select, um, like an ad hoc, right? So it doesn't have any sort of established, it doesn't have anything sort of codified or established. Other than it's in the rules that the council can, can create that kind of body for a period of time.
And, 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 okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the conversation to members of this committee. When I saw you raising your hand, was that fully purposely or not?
Hey, Gwen. That was, that was purposely. Um, hello. Thank you. Um, what I was thinking was like, I was, I guess I envisioned like this kind of thing where it's like you click on a committee or a board and you go and you click on it and it says, um, subject to open meeting law, you know, like, kind of like in your face.
So I'm going to say just, I mean, I think all of, any of these boards and committees would be subject to open meeting law.
Okay.
That's, that's like, that's the norm.
So maybe a click through or something to like explain that or, you know, um, like, yeah, right. I guess they're all subject to open meeting law. Yeah. Um, or just maybe some kind of explanatory thing for people to understand what it means to serve in the city and like what they might have to think about and what they might have to consider.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something more, something, that's just what I'm thinking off the top of my head that I was thinking about while I was listening to, um, Javier and you.
Yeah, I mean, I have other dreams that I have, um, are kind of, uh, onboarding in general, right? So when, um, you know, at the start of a term for like an elected official, it's easy to get Alan Seawald to come and sort of do a whole presentation. The thing with boards and committees is that it's constantly, it's, um, you know, it's rolling. So you can't, and, and that, you wouldn't want to take time for each new, whenever, when a new member came on to stop everything for that, for that presentation. Anyway, my point is, um, one of my dreams is to create, um, sort of like a video where he goes through his whole spiel and explains a lot of it. And maybe like an FAQ that goes with it. So that when someone joins, um, or when someone's appointed and, um, you know, that would be part of their process and, you know, they would have to get sworn in and then, you know, wa- watch that, take the ethics, um, exam, those sorts of things.
Ethics, um, conflict of interest.
Right.
Open meeting. Um, anything like that. I, I like that idea.
Yeah, it would, I open meeting law is just so hard. Like those of us who've done it for years and years, Cynthia.
Robert's rules.
Yeah.
You know, I'm so.
There's always questions, even if.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's.
Mayor.
Oh, no, that's okay. I, I just trailed off. I just trailed off thinking about open meeting law.
Um, excellent. So I'm gonna, Cynthia.
Um, on the same topic, um, before I was on this committee, I was, um, had the privilege to serve on, you might have heard about it, Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. Um, the redesigning power structures committee, um, based on a grant that, um, CES holds. And actually Jim Nash and Karen Foster came to one of our very early meetings because this, the redesigning power structure folks were like, okay, well, what is this thing? What is this select committee? And they were explaining it. And I, having, you know, been on the Board of Health and totally, um, bought into open meeting law, knowing full well that cannot be changed. The feedback that Karen and Jim got was the the historical white supremacy of that structure and how it causes a barrier. In, in inherent, it's, it's going to be a barrier to some populations that we might want to attract. So the conversation about educating, I mean, we can't change it, we can't throw it out. Even though some of my colleagues on that committee said, you gotta change it, you gotta blow it up. And we know that, that, that you can't do that. Um, but educating, um, potential members about this labyrinth of, of, of power structure that we all adhere to and perform in. And it amazes me how we even get work done, but we do it. And so, um, just to that education piece, and I think the video or an FAQ could be helpful in helping us, um, if people are really turned off by it.
Yeah, that's so interesting. I would, and I would love to, um, get, hear that presentation from CES and know a little bit more about it. It's, it's interesting and it's tragic, right? Because, you know, the open meeting law is, is supposed to be about like doing all the business in open, in the sunlight, no backroom dealings, no, you know, it's all, it's supposed to be about how to make things as accessible and open to the public and that there's, there's nothing happening behind the scenes that they don't have access to. Um, so it's, um, that's, that's hard, that, that duality of it is really hard.
I mean, Ki- Karen and Jim and I, who have drank this Kool-Aid for so long, were, were really, you know, taken aback. Um, but learned a lot from that, that conversation about how it could be a barrier. So just wanted to bring that up.
Excellent. Um, Gwen? When you're me.
Sorry about that. Um, I'm kind of moving around right now and I really apologize for that. I just, um, we're as late as usual today. So, um, like, when it comes to like open meeting law, it's like, who can you turn to when you, when you know something and you're just like, like, who can you turn to? Um, you know, it's kind of like, you know, sometimes there's intense stuff that happens, you know, there's the, either amazing stuff or just like stuff that's like going on and um, I, I think it was told to me in the beginning that I could contact Attorney Seawall if I had questions. And so, um, you know, like, I guess going to the Inspector General's site or like knowing how to like deal with like little things like that, you know, like, I mean, I guess we can contact different people in the government to ask those questions, but knowing exactly who you can ask about what, like,
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, that would, that's something that it's kind of hard to learn, but it's, it takes time to learn those things because um, not everybody understands the structure of government and like what rules what and, you know, that kind of a thing, like who, who do I call for this? Or who would I, you know, connect with, with that? And then sometimes like you might want to reach out to somebody, but then you're like, oh, I don't know if I should, you know, or you know, different things like that.
Um, yeah, I, I hear that. I, so I mean, I would say, I would hope that people who serve would feel comfortable going to whatever sort of staff person is staffing it or to the chair. Um,
Okay, yeah.
Who could then direct them further. Um, but the city solicitor always says that he would much rather have a conversation with one of us than, you know, the Attorney General's office because of one of us or something like, you know, he's, he's always happy to, um, to make sure that maybe understand, um, the structure that we have to work in.
Excellent. Garrett. All right. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process and a couple of questions that I saw through the survey and then we kind of um, throughout discussions. And one was, where was it? There was just a, you know, a lot of people talked about feedback from the city. And I was wondering, was there is there a way for people to, to contact someone for questions? Is there someone in charge of that? Who is that?
Sure. So, well, right now it's Court Klein. It's, so Court is the person in the mayor's office who, who receives all the applications and then gives them to me and, and sort of does the whole process then. Process, you know, uh, puts together the memo that goes to Laura for the council. He's, he's the point person for appointments. Um.
Is he also the person who does the website or updates the sites and stuff?
He, yes, he can. I mean, there are a few people, but yes, you mean specifically around boards and committees?
Boards and committees, yeah.
Generally it's Court, yeah. So Court is actually, um, before you all like write down Court Klein, um, Court is actually going to be moving to another position in the city soon. So, um, uh, as soon as, you know, we'll have to hire for that position. Um, but it is the, it, um, the administrative assistant for the mayor's office.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to say, like, uh, in this committee, because I know I talked to you, Mayor. Um, I said, there was a kind of a discussion from some of the respondents about, uh, maybe having a, a list of preferred positions. And if you don't get one position.
Um, yeah.
You know, so I, I'll turn it over to you because I know that you've thought about this and, and so maybe you could.
Yeah. I have. So how the, um, the application now allows you to tick off multiple boxes? So the thing that's always most flummoxing for me is when, when we get, um, when we get an application in that people, someone's like, has chosen, like, said that they'd like to serve on six different, you know, committees. And so trying to then figure out what their priority is or what their interest is or where they would best fit um, can be a little bit challenging. So, um, Councilor Perry and I were talking the other day about the possibility of doing kind of a ranking or still allowing people to say, you know, that they, they have multiple interests. Um, but maybe letting them sort of rank the order in which, uh, they would like to be considered for those.
Can I ask something related to that, Garrett? Hmm, yeah. So, so, so for example, now in the, in the website of the, of the boards and committees, it's three, four, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 20, 21, um, openings.
Hmm.
In the survey that, uh, from, uh, almost a hundred and fifty people, forty, forty-nine or forty-six stated that they were never contacted back, right?
Okay.
So one of the things that we were talking in our last meeting, it was in relationship that, um, in theory, we should have enough, uh, people power to fill out all the vacancies in theory, right?
Mm-hmm.
And sort of, and, and I do, I, I agree with Garrett that, uh, you know, streamlining that process where, where we can use all the people who are not being appointed to uh, be able to move to positions that are, are vacant would be to one of the things that we have heavily talked about.
Um, so yes, in theory, that's true. You know, there, there are some boards or committees or commissions that people don't tend to, uh, you know, apply for. Um, so it's it, you know, it's, and it's constantly changed. So right now we're getting to the point where we're going to do reappointments. They happen in June or where Court has just sent out, um, emails to people that need to be reappointed, asking if they would like to be reappointed or what they're. So that always forces a lot of turnover. So things happen at different times where there's more vacancies. It's also just, I, I will be really honest, like, it's a lot of work on my part, too. Um, so sometimes, you know, it's certain times of the year when things are really busy, unless there's like a, a real need that they, I might sort of, you know, I, I wish I could come up with a system where every month I do appointments on this day. It's just the way my schedule is that hasn't happened. So, um, it's rolling and it's also sort of rolling in my mind. And I'm always trying to get back to it. It's not always happening as fluidly as I would like it to. Um, another thing that I saw that you wanted to ask about was, um, so some, there are some uh, bodies that have requirements for, um, for positions, right? So, you know, there was a question about whether I ever kind of like solicit or if I go out or ask specific people. Um, sometimes you have to, um, because it's, you know, for example, the historical commission needs to have, um, two nominees from, from the Western House American Institute of Har- Architects, one member appointed from Realtors Association Pioneer Valley, two local from the Board of Realtors, Board of Health, there has to be a physician. Um, there, there are some specific things that mean you really have to like go out and, and potentially find someone if no one's applied and often they haven't. Um, oh, the, the, um, there, for the Board of Registars, you still need a registered Republican and a registered Democrat. That certainly makes sense. Let me tell you, it is not easy to find a Republican in North Hampton. And actually, we, right before I became mayor, we, um, had gone through a home rule petition process with the state um, to exempt us from the state requirement that, that one of the licensed, one of the three members of the license commission be a, uh, registered Republican. So you used to have registered Republican, registered Democrat, um, and then a third member. Because it's just, it's, like, I would, I had to do this for the Board of Registars. And I know Mayor Narkovitz would tell me that he would have to do this. You would have to go like to the clerk and say like, can you please print out the, all of the Republicans in the city? And then like I'd be cold calling Republicans to try and get this. The all of the Republicans in the city and then like I'd be cold calling Republicans to try and get this filled. So. So theoretically, yes, we could just plug people into these spots, but it's not always that simple is is one of the issues.
Yeah, so it's it's good that you just said that. So we have talked about, so that, you know, they are. Their advisory boards are technically nature. And are the those are in they are the ones that are community oriented in nature, right? And and we have been talking sort of from that. Sort of with that lens. I'm gonna.
So just you've been focused on talking about advisory boards versus, so there's three different, there's advisory, there's regulatory, and there's adjudicatory.
Yeah.
And and some fit multiple categories.
Yes. Jamila.
Well, since you just brought up the three different types, can you talk about what the three different types are?
Sure, because I copied that section, hoping you would ask. Okay, so advisory, so this is straight out of the the code. So advisory. They have no legal authority to promulgate rules or regulations or decide individual cases or enact policy. So they are, they are purely advisory. And, you know, brought together around a topic to give advice on how how best to proceed. Regulatory, the body does have legal authority to promulgate rules and regulations, set charges and fees. Decide individual cases and enact policy. And then adjudicatory, the body has legal authority to hear and decide the rights and obligations of individual applicants. And then again, some are all three, some are two out of three, just one.
What would the planning board be, for example?
Okay, planning board is, it's it may be all three, but I can tell you. Super quick. So just for every, anyone, if you want to know this, if anyone wants to look this stuff up yourself, too. If you on the city site, if you go to the section that says the charter and the code. That will and then click on that link that will bring you right in there and you can look up any of these. Any of the multi-member bodies in in the code. So Planning Board is all three. It's advisory, regulatory, and adjudicatory.
Okay.
It also has the authorities and responsibilities of these and many often on this on the city website on the page, they will have copied and. And pasted the section from the code in there as well or from a general law.
Excellent. Do you have any other questions, Jamila? Cynthia.
Um, yeah, just again, questions about the process. We have heard both through the survey and anecdotally. That and I'll just say, I think the process needs some some review or work and timeliness. And I'm sure. And and courtesy, right? A person who takes the time to apply and expects a genuine response, whether it be. Pro or con or whatever, has that response in it in a timely manner. And so there must be. I would think, Mayor. Do you have ideas about how that process can be improved? And then perhaps my second question is. During COVID, the Board of Health, which I'm on, had a vacancy. And like, who wants to join the Board of Health during COVID? Because of what we went through, but I kept asking, where are we with it? Where are we with it? Where are we with it? And there seemed to be a disconnect. And so I I don't know if it can be board members' responsibilities. To help recruit. I I'm not trying to usurp from the mayor's, you know, certainly executive privilege here, but. But I never really knew, like, how can I, how can I as a board member tap someone's shoulder or or forward this? So. I guess my question is kind of twofold. Process, your thoughts on the process and also how do you feel about us helping you? To kind of release this logjam.
Yeah, I'll take this the second part first. I, you know, I I think that's great. And often, you know, I will. Turn to the the chair or the staff person and say, like, do you have any ideas? Or and and depending on, you know, there's sort of different different bodies of different cultures, also have different staff who are more engaged. They will talk about it at a meeting and work on trying to recruit people. So that's that's great. I mean, that is very, very, very welcomed. Particularly, I mean, particularly, you know, if you serve on one of these bodies, then you and you you've had a member step off. You know. Better than anybody sort of what what they took with them, what expertise or what sort of area. That they brought to that body that that is now missing now that they they've left it. So I I think it's. I very much encourage. You know, anyone who's serving to encourage other people or or identify other people who they think would be really. Have a valued voice on there. That's great. And then process. So. Yes, I think it absolutely could be improved. One of the challenges that I've tried to think through, and again, we're we're going to be. I I will be. This is kind of a perfect opportunity for or a perfect time for you all to be doing this exploration and then giving recommendations. Because there will be a new person in the mayor's office who will be overseeing this. So we can kind of start new. And fresh and and come up with how we want this to be. So this is, this works out really, really well. One of the challenges is that people apply all the time. And not necessarily for something that there's an opening. So that's kind of the, so if someone applies. And there's not an opening or it's one of these that there's a specific area that needs to be filled before I could apply. I could appoint somebody else. I don't really have, you know, I don't have a yes or no answer for that person. It's not like, okay, there's this opening. I've got five. And, you know, I have now appointed one person, so I'm going to tell these four they haven't been appointed. Openings happen all the time, you know, the the next day someone could resign from that same committee and then. You know, so that's why we keep applications on file for two years. So. It's not really an. It's not really a no, right? It's just. We, someone's appointed and then I I hold, you know, I get a copy of all applications and I hold them and I very regularly go through them. And I have different piles and I go back and and try and fill from people who've already applied. So that's what makes it a little bit hard about, you know, of course, I want people to feel appreciated for their interest. And I don't want them to feel sort of hanging out there, but how. I don't know how to put parameters around it because it's, I, they they may be appointed in the future and. I've certainly appointed people who had applied, you know, even I've appointed people who applied before I became mayor. And then, you know, I have a conversation with them and say, like, you know, I I realize you you this was months ago and I, you know, I don't know where you are in your life right now or there's something you're still interested in. But let's talk about it. And, you know, is is this thing that you still feel you could do or would want to do?
And I think that gesture. You know, pulling that application out of the out of the pile can be. An individual's poor experience can be just diminished when the mayor calls them and says, hey. Like, you know, I've I found this. Are you still interested? I think the point is. Perhaps there can be some communication to that applicant. We're going to keep you on file. Don't have anything right now. Really check with, you know, something that continues that conversation. It's just that we had. You know, too many folks that just felt like they went into a black hole, so to speak, and maybe. Maybe also just a quick follow up. We were talking, talking a little bit about compensation. On committee services and. Some, you know, all the constraints around it, but just wondered how you felt about it. That's a possibility at all. To, I've been in a couple of organizations, this redesign and power structures committee. Again, non-city committee was one that grappled with that and we did it on a on a opt-out scale, right? If you felt you needed compensation, get $25 a meeting or something like that. Do you think that's possible in the city?
So there are. A lot of challenges to it. To be able to do that, people would have to be set up in Munis, which is our our system. And that would need. Constant updated. We've talked about it. It would really need like. An additional staff person to to try and handle that aspect of it. And because we can't, we can't pay someone with city with taxpayer funds without essentially turning them into an employee. Which makes it hard. Another, I also feel. Really strongly that it would, like, if if it was, we couldn't just pick like this board or this commission, like, it would have to be across the board because. I it it should never be up to me to decide what someone's in, where someone's interests lie, right? Or what they would like to serve on. So how to do that with the amount of. Boards and committees we have seems hard. I hear the opt-out possibility. It's just, it's a really hard thing to try and puzzle through how we could do it. Because we're a municipality.
Yep.
And I, you know, when I, as a counselor, I. I really wanted to look at council, whether we could do like a sliding scale for counselors and things like that. Like, this is something that I've been thinking about for. How like nine years now, how to make this work and. Again, these these white supremacist structures that we work in are very, very hard. And. Particularly, yeah, it's very, everyone would need to get a W two from the city. They're all, we can't, there's no way to like give gift cards. It's just, we cannot use taxpayer money. To to give to an individual without making them an employee.
I think one of the. One of the other alternatives to compensation, not not for everyone's, doesn't put food on the table, but. Feeling like you are of value. To the city, feeling that what you're doing, this work that you're doing is important work. And you want to do it again for another term. And you want to even tap a pal on the shoulder or, you know, because we have such a diverse city where people come from so many different backgrounds. Hey, why don't you consider this? Because you can really learn a lot. That encouragement can go a long way for us to have more members.
So I mean, I'm, you know, I'm looking, so I I'm looking at you, Cynthia, and Javier and Gwen. And so the the three of you all serve on have serve on multiple things. So. I mean, I I hope that you feel valued. You are, and I thank you so much for all that you do. It's interesting, like, it it becomes sort, it's it's a self-selecting process. So how do we bring more people in? And then you often see a lot, you know, it's it's like anything when someone. When you like step up to do something, then you're going to be called on to do more things. And so you see a lot of the same folks.
So it's interesting that Cynthia mentions that, right? One of the things that we saw was that. Sort of a high level of frustration from people like they didn't take our recommendations. And that, I think that more than taking on or taking the recommendation speaks to the many expectations that people serving in advisory boards, right? That, you know, you're going to give a set of recommendations. Some may happen, others. In the long term, it happened, others, they may not happen at all, right? But and we saw in the survey. That a lot of people would say that, right? They would they would say, well, you know, I don't the point because after that, when we recommended things, they never did it. We sort of speak, it speaks to the sort of the clarity that people, you know, managing expectation, managing how things play out and understanding how things. Play out, right? And I think that's also speaks to what. Cynthia's saying. And in relation to compensation. I do believe strongly that in some point, maybe not now, but in the future, we need to find a way to. To to facilitate. And and in the people being able to serve in just because of the economical constraints, the survey that we 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 moved forward. With Laura. A huge amount of people are sort of middle-aged up people, wealthy, white people, a lot, mostly women. Mostly families with either no kids or kids that left home, so no dependents. That's that's sort of the demographic that we 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 saw in the in the survey and. And, you know, talking about. Talking about a report that has to address the fact that the big bulk of, you know, we send a little more than 400. We, a lot of people, Laura sent more than 400 emails out. Doing the outreach and we have gotten almost 150. So for me, it's a good representation of it. So. I think that that that's something that, you know, it may warrant sort of a. Some detailed research. And see how we can do it. I mean, you know, people sometimes say that they can observe because, you know, they don't have childcare. Or, you know. We may see improvement in relationship to accessibility with hybrid meetings, right? Now that the House had that sort of. Pass bill that is going to extend it to March 2025. But at the same time, there's a study from BU that states that, yeah, you would have a meeting to get more accessibility, but you don't, you get more more accessibility. From the same demographic. You're not getting more accessibility for different and you're you're accessing more of the same demographic running from. A pool of diverse people, right? And and I see, so I'm also serving in the compensation advisory board. And elected officials are grossly underpaid. I cannot put it in a in a in a different, like, obscenely underpaid. Right? And and, you know, when and one of the things that I have been doing is going around talking with elected officials from Greenfield, Springfield. Was it Springfield, Chico B, East Hampton, Northampton? And 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 in a in a in a really simple question, which is, how many hours do you feel? You would need to actually be putting this work to make it meaningful, having in mind that you are the one. That has to vote a full-fledged city budget, millions and millions. And the the answer would be sometimes double of the time that they are able to spend right now, sometimes 150% of the time. So if elected officials are having a hard time with that. People who are just want to volunteer time to be able to serve the city. That are are led to their own devices, it's it's really complicated. And I think that, you know, I'm frustrating to you that we. We made a slide of recommendation for the city to take a look into this in in the future, to be able to. To have, you know, a professional take, somebody making a study. Of feasibility study in relationship to. You know, per diem's or something that is going to create accessibility, because the big barrier that we see. Is that upper middle class to reach wealthy people are the ones serving.
And that. Sorry, do you know is CES, I had met with CES. Maybe when I was just mayor-elect. It was very, very early on. And they had said that they were exploring that or that they were kind of on their own trying to do that research. Do you know if anything's happened with that?
If you're talking about the compensation, Mayor?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When I was on this committee, they have a policy now. So they wrote, accepted on a policy, a policy, so they are doing this practice.
So for themselves?
Yeah.
They had told me that they were, oh, go, sorry, go ahead.
Well, actually, because on the committee I served, there was community members on the committee. So they could, they could receive compensation, but if you're a paid employee, no. Paid employee for CES, no.
I, I'm sorry, I should have been more clear. They, I meant that they had said that they were looking for municipalities, like they were. They were trying to do some of. I, um, I'm sorry, I should have been more clear, they, I meant that they had said that they were looking for municipalities, like they were, they were trying to do some of that research. To help cities and towns figure out an avenue for their their um bodies.
For their bodies.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, maybe I misunderstood what they were saying, they, I know that they were sort of exploring and they they said, you know, we're, we understand there there's some barriers at the municipal level, but we'd like to look into that.
Um, I I think, and we could be talking, you know, two different paths, but on redesigning power structures, one of the things we wanted to do was to see if we could assist the city. In some capacity to think about redesigning their power structure, and that's why Jim and Karen came to our meeting. Um, but the, you know, the rules and the regs and the open meeting kind of push that initiative aside, so the committee was looking for other opportunities. If we're talking about the same thing, because they have a, you know, a boatload of grants that they're doing there.
For sure, yeah, okay.
Excellent, um, Garrick and after that, when? And I want to be mindful, we have uh thirteen more minutes and I want to leave three minutes, so we have ten more minutes.
All right, um, so a couple of things, this has been a great conversation. Um, I I think that for me, what really comes out is that some of this can be handled with the onboarding, uh, managing expectations, you know, there were people who felt like they didn't, weren't doing. Uh, that they weren't making a difference, but really, if there's an explanation going into it, I think it'll help. I did want to highlight to you, Mayor, that um. Looking at the survey, one thing that stood out to me was the amount of people who said that they were consider applying for another board. Uh, and it was extremely high, forty six percent of the people agreed, uh, close to twenty percent strongly agreed. And only nine percent disagreed, six percent strongly disagreed. So, you know, the people are willing to, like you said, it's a self selecting body, so they're in there, they want to do it. Um, my question is moving away from the process um and more about outreach. Something that I noticed and I think Javier mentioned is that our demographics tend to turn towards older, you know, folks who have have. Kind of lived their life, their their kids are are grown, they're out there. Um, and so I was wondering, you know, I I had identified youth engagement as as a thing. Um, do do you have any thoughts about ways in which we can kind of do a better job at at some outreach? A lot of what we saw in the survey was that people who know someone, or people, like if you knew someone involved in the city. You knew about these things, so, you know, I'll turn that over to you.
Um, I'm kind of, I'm laughing because the one place we don't have problems recruiting people is the youth commission. There's like forty of them, there's so many of them, um, and they are great ambassadors, I think, for um for this kind of civic engagement. Um, you know, I, it's outreach, I I'm I'm all for any ideas that people have. We, sometimes when there's um like a very specific need or there's like a a a critical need because. They need to get to quorum, you know, the city will do, will sort of put something out there, we may, we probably should be, this is laying out for this next um person. Better about kind of regularly posting or highlighting. Uh, um vacancies that we have or reminding people that there are vacancies. Um, so. And for certain. We're, you know, for I I've tried to reach out to um housing authorities, to the North Hampton Housing Authority, to different properties. And um and try and put the word out there that there are vacancies. So we've tried to do some outreach and and get more people who um who might not necessarily. Uh, you know, know about any any the possibilities, but there's not a sort of consistent. Way that outreach happens. Um, so I'm, I would love to hear, I would love for you all to come up with some ideas that we can try and implement. And um. I'm always happy for counselors to uh to, I used to do that when I was a city counselor, would um periodically kind of. Put the word out that that um people should serve, I would also just in conversations with people would, you know, when they would be like, oh, like, what's this about, like, what do you do? And I would always say like, the best place to really start to get involved is on one of the, one of the many boards and commissions that we have and. There are always rotating vacancies, so you know, please apply. Um, I feel like I'm wandering all over answering your question, Garrick, I'm sorry. Um. But any, any ideas for outreach and um. And again, empowering the committees and commissions themselves to do that outreach. And when they are ha- they know that they have a vacancy to. Talk about it in their meetings, though, you know, there's not always a lot of the public who are um in subcommittee meetings. Um, or in um these kind of meetings, but to kind of put out to their networks that um. That they serve and they find it to be a valuable way to contribute to their community and they be interested in talking to other folks about it. Um, does that answer what you're saying?
Yeah, it was open ended, there was not, you know.
That's why I'm just going and going.
I mean, I I have some thoughts, I told you a couple of my ideas and and sure we'll put some in our report, but just want to check in.
Yeah.
When?
Well, of course, um, I'm kind of like, I'm rewinding all the way back to what Cynthia was saying was, what about having the chair? Assign somebody or, you know. I mean, the chair is always going to be the gatekeeper, that's who ultimately decides what goes on the agenda and things like that, and I think that's fine for a lot of boards and commissions, but not all of them. So have, I'm sorry, did you say have the chair assign somebody? Um, Cynthia was talking about how like a lot of times, like a chair, like, and I can totally understand on the Board of Health Commission. Um, that you, that the Board of Health, you know, they would know exactly, you know, what they're looking for, they know the qualifications of the people that they need to find. And so I think in that case, it would be really important um that the chair would share with the board. Um, what they're looking for. Um, and then also like maybe have the board members be able to give feedback on that in some way, so. Yeah, the board members are are should always feel feel welcome to give feedback. Um, and you know, either directly to me or to the chair or to the staff person, certainly directly to me. Um, I'm always happy to hear it. And, you know, sometimes, some, sometimes there are certain things I'm looking for too, because it's advisory, you know, I'm I'm asking for help on various different things. Um, so I'm always happy to have conversations about, you know, where where I feel like I could use some expertise or or help.
Yeah, okay. I think also know knowing that, I I mean, in in the Board of Health, which I, you know, totally respect all my colleagues. We never had the conversation, right? And if we did post COVID, you know, we would have had many, many ideas, and so I think it's just having that green light, knowing that you could. That it's okay, that it could be on the agenda every time there's a vacancy. And talk about what we might need, I think that that's so healthy. Um, and 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 it would, you know, it would be in the minutes and then it could be fed up to 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 you, Mayor, like, this is what we think we need right now. Um, so that you don't have to do the work. So it's a, it's a cultural change, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree, that would be helpful, because I do feel like I I'm often sort of like tracking down department head, you know, like I'd be like Meredith, I see there's a vacancy, like, what are you looking for or? Um, yeah, so I I would be happy to to have, you know, have it just be more of a conversation that comes, can can be initiated from either side.
Yeah. Thank you.
Excellent, so we have five more minutes. Uh, thank you so much, Mayor.
You.
Long day for you.
Long day for everybody, right? We're all, it's it's eight fifty five for all of us.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, it's good to be with all of you, thank you, thank you so much for, thank you so much for the work you're doing on on this. Um, and for helping us try and expand um expand uh. The voices that that contribute to our city, um, and thank you all also for all of the work that you do on the various things that you sit on, you are um a group of superstars who do a lot. Um, so I I want to tell you my heartfelt appreciation for um for your commitment and your love for our community and on all of the many, many hours that. That um you give to making North Hampton an even greater city than it is, so thank you very genuinely, I appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Bye. Oh, and I put it, sorry, in the chat, I put um just that link that'll take you right into where the charter and the code is, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Excellent, so it's uh four minutes, there just about time to. Um, so I, hold on, let me. I was extremely sadly badly multitasking. Uh. So I've a most QR code. Uh, so uh I add it, so it's either, you know, either the hyperlink in the PDF version or the QR code physically. Either way, both work, I'm gonna add the thoughts in the first one. And uh the process and accessibility. For serving, right? And I will send this tonight to you. Uh, and Laura, and you know, the mayor just left, but one of the things would be great is that the city and and they. In social media, if the city can just post this during the week.
Definitely, I'll send it to court. Okay. On the news slash feature.
Excellent.
What is it?
The news slash feature of the website, it's the scroll sort of at the top of the homepage that has um most pressing announcements.
Okay.
I think it has the new um D Department of Community Care um director right now and.
Oh, exciting news, about the new DCC worker.
Excellent, so um, I just want to remind you, so the only one that I have heard that is not able to make the twenty six is Cynthia. Because how tiny our group is. Uh, all the rest of us have to have have to be there, because if no, we uh we wouldn't have uh. Or I'm not going to say, we.
Yeah, I think you could.
No, 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 no. Everybody should come. So yes, you're right, yes, but I know that everybody is is coming. Um, if you have any questions, just feel free to email me, remember, done, done. If when all the material I'm going to be sending, don't reply all, because that that would be a violation of the law. Uh, just answer to me, send me any comments uh that uh before ten AM tomorrow. For edits to the flyer and I will send it to you. Um, is there any question about anything that we have talked today about?
We should be able to test the 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 um the QR code, right?
I just tested.
Okay.
So I tested, please, when I send it out, test it again. Murphy's Law, if we don't test it is, if we not test it, it's not going to work, but test it, it would work. So. Uh.
Garrett. My only question is, I know you said you were going to print out some things to put around. Uh, if you could leave some maybe at Laura's office or something, or I I don't know how I would pick some up.
I can, I can, I can do that.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not going to say I I promise I'm going to get it, but I, it would be easy for me to, if I'm in town, maybe after I drop off my kids, I could pick some up, so.
Perfect, uh, also, I want to say thank you so much to Garrick and Jamila, that when uh it went through the Newman Show. To promote this event and talk about sort of the nature of our work and what we're doing and what we are up to. Thank you so much, I totally, I totally for that.
For that.
Remember that, so Cynthia.
Uh, just a quick question, I don't know if Laura have this information, but there must be some um box checking communication plan whenever the city wants to get information out. Um, and I'm just thinking about that for our final report, you know, what are all those places, who's in charge of that? Um, when we talk about publicizing open positions, so that there isn't that deep punt for them, and so I don't, I don't know, or it or is it all catch can in the city? Um, flyer here, an initiative there.
They probably have some kind of a standard uh format in the mayor's office, but.
Okay, if we can explore what that is, that would be cool.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, I I'm not, do you mean for 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 the material that we're putting out for the listening session or?
No, no, in terms of barriers, um, and how how are people accessing social media or traditional print media or whatever? How do we, how do we publicize, how do we communicate?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just want to say that in the Health Commission, we just know if we got to tell people something, boom, 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 this is what we do. Because it's a generally an emergency, so. So, just wondering, if there's a protocol, I guess, communication protocol.
Accessible to all. I just was at a meeting the other night and they said, well, we put it in the Hampshire Gazette. Well, not everybody can afford to pay to get onto the Hampshire Gazette. So that's not really, if it was just that, so. Um, and really, I only need a couple of copies. Um, but I mean, I could take ten and probably ten would be a good number, um, and if Laura, or I don't know who I would pick them up from at at City Hall if I pop in there.
Um. Laura, I will visit you in something tomorrow and we will. This.
Sounds good.
I'll just come in the next time I go to AM News.
Uh, and then when, let's let's sort of get in touch and I can drop stuff for you.
Okay.
Excellent, so um, I'm assuming there's nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Excellent, second by when, uh, Laura?
Javier. Uh, Jamila.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
And Cynthia.
Yes.
And Gwen.
Yes.